Good evening, everyone. I'll call the meeting to order. And I'd ask if anyone's recording, if they'd make it known. Thank you. There's copy of the minutes on the table up front if anyone wishes to... There's more than one copy. I mean, agenda, sorry. There's more than one copy there, isn't there? First item was meeting minutes, which we don't have any. Second item is a covenant release for Burgess Point Shore's subdivision.
And this one is an older subdivision. We did not have a file on it, so I asked for the engineer to submit a copy of the subdivision plan, which we received. We'll need those to be reviewed against the construction of what's out there now to determine what the value of the construction should be. Or to determine whether or not the work was completed as originally approved in a definitive plan.
Okay, so that will go back on the 23rd? No, 30th, right?
The 23rd.
Oh, paperclip.
Ken, did they provide you with a copy of the certificate of approval to go along with that?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
That as well. Next, we have an approval not required plan for Kenneth and Christine Albertelli on Northport Drive.
I know I know where Northport is, but...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, I'm Bob Rogers with GAF Engineering, representing the Albertellis this evening. Oh, that's right, yes. So, the intent of this plan is to... We have two peers in separate ownership on a single lot. And so I would direct you to the notes, 1 and 2. Parcel G1 is not a buildable lot, it lacks sufficient area and frontage. So G1 is intended to be conveyed to the lots of F99. So the pier that's on the left portion of the... The left pier is going to the left owners, which they own the pier, but it was constructed on the neighbor's property, on the Albertelli's property. So we have these waterfront, non-buildable parcels. There's two peers on G2. We want to put the left pier on G1. And otherwise than that, they're... That's the intent and sole purpose of this plan.
This guy's here. This guy... This guy's here. This guy's here. This is the Albertellis? This is... Maybe he's here.
It's a similar situation on the south side of Northport Drive. The lot on the left is the Gambrazios. The lots on the right are Albertelli's. I have a nice little aerial, if you'd like.
So these are existing.
Yes.
On top of them. This guy's... This guy's dog. He's built on his property.
On his property. There's a refugee camp down there?
I have no local knowledge of the area.
Other way around.
Oh, yeah, there's for Bay.
So why was the pier put on the...
I do not know the history of it. You know, this is just another situation where we're trying to cover each other's meetings, and there's too many meetings and not enough people to go around, so they've... I'm here tonight to present the plan, but I certainly do not know what the history of the construction of the piers, when it took place. You know, what we're trying to do, obviously, is if the Gambrazios... Well, to put the pier... Gambrazio's pier on their property, so that if either party sells their property, it would be a clean sale. You know, aside from that, we... You know, we're hanging our hat on the typical Form A, "Approval not required." It's not a subdivision of land. It's a shifting of parcel lines, non-buildable parcel lines.
Bob, are the owners of the dwelling labeled number 15 Albertelli, do they own parcel G2?
Actually, so it's in joint ownership. So the Albertellis and the Gambrazios jointly own G2. Only the Gambrazios own G1. So maybe there would be a further, you know... Maybe as part of this plan, I don't know for certain. Maybe they would be, as part of the deal, you know, now that you have ownership, you know, on the land of your own pier, you don't need to share.
But Albertelli at least has part ownership of G2 that's going to be... Have part of it taken away and put within the next lot?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. I had this one other color assessment, basically, right here.
Oh, okay.
That stuff.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I don't see any issues with the plan as far as it being an admissible plan, given the notes that they've been put on the plan and what they're attempting to do. That Northport Drive is probably, well, it says it has gravel road. It's basically a paper street for the majority of it, giving access to the frontage for Shell As long as it says neither one of them are building lots, then you should be okay.
It would appear as though Mr. Gambrazio owns currently G2?
Is it drawn?
A G?
Yeah, just hand it off that assessment.
Yeah, the original G looks like it's identified as belonging to Gambrazio.
Oh, sorry. This really shouldn't have located 50 feet to the left. Yeah. Sure, which one? Is this one? Yep. This one is this one? Yep. Yep. This is just shaking this line. No. They're taking... They're taking from it. This is existing, they're taking this from it. Right, and they're shaking it up. So this line we got.
So this piece here is blue, and all the green belongs to this guy.
Yeah. Blue belongs to Albertelli. Green belongs to this guy, and the orange is John, I guess.
Okay, so they're just cutting it out, combining it with the green, that's all. No big deal.
It seemed to be.
Endorse... I mean, entertain a motion to accept and... The Form A plan is presented.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
All right.
We're going to teach this guy, yeah?
I'll teach this guy this as well. For the...
I know I shoved a pen in my pocket somewhere. I got it.
What do you deserve, Dan?
I can just... Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next is a request for minor modification of a special permit for Bay Point LLC.
Hello, I'm Chris Reynolds, project manager at the Windwood Pines Project at the Bay Point Club. Coming tonight to ask for a minor modification to my special permit and site plan review. Just to kind of give you an update, since we got our special plan and approvals, we developed our housing plans to the next level. And one of the things we did that is, obviously, with some market research with the real estate, is really try to develop our single-family and duplexes. This first phase is made up of 28 units of singles and duplexes. And one of the big things on the market study, we're going for the older generation, is to make sure to have the master bedroom on the first with an open living room, dining room, kitchen design. And our plans that we had submitted previously had the master on the first for the single families, but for the duplexes, we didn't. We had the bedrooms upstairs. And the early indications and a lot of our research found that even on the duplexes, to really market this to the older generation, which is our target market, we really need to have the master on the first. So at that point, we redeveloped some of our plans. I've attached in color some of the renderings and some of the floor plans that we are currently selling for the project. And these plans allow for either them to be singles or duplexes. They all have the master on the first. And what caused the problem that I'm back here for is when you put the master on the first on the duplex, it increases the lot... It increases the house size on the first floor footprints. So it increased the size of the houses by a little bit, not in terms of total square footage, but in terms of footprint. So when we first started, and we... Obviously, the first thing was to survey the property. We laid it out there, and we started locating these homes with the current designs, and it just... We kept knocking up against the current proposed property lines. So at that point, obviously, it's important to get this first phase going right so the next... The whole project goes well. The property lines were really arbitrarily that we picked, you know, at the beginning, since it's our golf course and where we picked them. And so what we decided to do was, before we kind of did anything, was to come back, increase these property lines by a little bit, change some of the angles, grab a little more of the land from what we had. And what you can see in the first set of plans that I gave you was something I just prepared when I sat down with Charlie and Ken, was the red line showing the original, what was approved, and then the new black line showing what we proposed. It's about a 28,000 square foot increase of property. Now, there's no change in density. It's still the same 28 homes, but it's adding a little bit of more square footage and how we orientate them. The smaller version, yeah.
Didn't you say that in the beginning?
As you can see on the modification plans, it's still...
Which ones? Which is the modification?
Site plan modification plans with the cover sheet. Same setbacks, same, you know, same density, same setbacks, same everything that was approval. The only thing we're doing is kind of, as you can see a little better with the red line on the previous plan, is modifying the property lines and how they sit and how the homes are orientated. Big items, obviously, when we're going for approvals is our, you know, how it would look from the street and the street views and what that is. And, you know, you get a little better idea of the renderings of how things would look out there and what we're planning to do.
What is the relationship between this and this? Why are we looking at two of them?
So the black line is the proposed, and the red is existing.
Is the proposed, right. What is this?
So I just did... This is the actual shown, the buildings and the setbacks.
But is it proposed or as permitted?
The red is permitted.
No, no, this, this, this.
The black is proposed. So we already have a special permit for it, and then what we're looking to do is basically modify the terms of the line.
Wait, wait, wait. Sorry. Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me? May I?
Yes.
Just make sure I'm understanding what I'm reading. This is the proposed line, which is this here.
Increase the square footage is one, but they moved out the drives.
So this is your... And these are your setbacks.
They had that many buildings over there on the approved.
There was just a lot going on, so we missed the...
Thank you, thank you.
Do you have pre-duplexes or something?
Right.
This drive layout, it looks like they've eliminated the streets.
There were 10 in there.
They eliminated these streets.
That's right. Took these out.
I was explaining, it's not the...
What's the modification?
It's not the final thing that we approved.
Right.
It makes sense not to have the driveways on two sides of the building.
Couldn't you see that?
It's this one.
So I also just passed out a... Working with Charlie, he gave me format for a minor modification to a special permit. Just wanted to give a draft to the board for their review.
This is the proposed.
The red is the permitted. Is the... Good question. What is this one?
I don't recall Phase 1 being that large.
This is the...
It was.
Line is the permitted.
It took everything to the north and east of Bay Point Drive where it comes in off of Onset Avenue.
See the original? And we go... You know, what we're looking to do is...
Well, that's...
Change this angle, but this is the Phase 1 S. Basically, the yellow line is the red line. So we'll grab... So what happened was, when we set out the property line stakes, you know, this area is not involved with the golf course, allowed to grab a little more room up in this front section over here. It's not... The orientation of the golf course is going this way. So, you know, when you set out there, this land was in play. So we grabbed a little more here, changed the angles here. We changed this as the road kind of got a little pinch point right here. So we kicked this property line out a little bit, just to grab ourselves a little more space. Nothing significant. Also got rid of this turnaround right here. This was causing some problems for us in terms of our housing design, because this caused the front of the house to be facing the golf course, but the back to face the roadway. So if you'd have drive-by, you'd be looking at the back of somebody's slider and a grill and that. So it's kind of not really the look we're kind of going for. So to kind of get to a little more uniform, what we discussed with Charlie was we set them back front-facing, so it'd be off the street. And it's kind of... Just to give us an idea.
What was the average increase to the actual structure itself, the footprint? How many square feet?
So in total square footage or on first? Because the total square footage didn't really change too much, because originally we had three bedrooms upstairs on the duplexes. So the square footage is still range from 1650 to about 1890 square feet. So that was kind of what we were going for, but the problem was, was the original duplex designs had the master up, you know, on the second. You know, in our current interest and the current buyers that we're kind of talking to, you know, they range from 60 to 75. You know, we've got four people currently signed up for the project, and, yeah, gotten some very, very positive feedback already.
It appears through units 19 through 28 that we've eliminated a couple of roads or long drives, which I suspect was the reorientation.
Yes, for that turnaround, that face to back.
But we didn't lose parking?
Didn't lose parking.
Yeah.
Nope. Still have the parking, and, you know, we added some guest parking to what we had. There was no intention to minimize or get rid of any parking, so we added parking back to make sure we had the parking spaces for it. If anything, we have a little more room now.
Did it impact the drainage calculations out to the road?
It did, yes. So we have a revised drainage study for it. Not a lot. We got rid of that driveway turnaround. The house has increased square footage-wise coverage, so that changed a little bit. So we have revised a drainage study that we'll submit to Mr. Rowley. But nothing significant.
In total, you're gaining 28,000 square feet?
Approximately, yes.
So the greens fees go down now?
A little bit.
Taking away from the golf. I needed that. Now I've got to be more accurate with my strokes here. All right.
So we still... We, you know, in discussions, we could have grabbed a little more, but we also don't want the residents pushing too far out into the golf course either. You know, it'll still feel like their backyard, and it's still... They're rough, and obviously, when you slice it or something, it can still go that way, don't get me wrong. But this way, it kind of forces them into their yard. So this way, they're sitting out and can still enjoy the golf course, but we don't want them to go too close, obviously, to the fairway because of balls. So we tried to increase it only where we didn't really have any play of golf going on. And that's why we kind of added the greatest amount of land is by that home 15 and 16, because we didn't have any of the golf balls going in that area. The other areas, we grabbed a little here and there in terms of the angles and what it was, but even where areas we probably could have pushed it out, we didn't want to. So we tried to minimize it where we could and add it where it made sense to the overall golf course, because nobody wants to be hit by golf balls on their deck.
On Sheet 14... On Sheet 13, you know what I mean? There's a... You show the red line, which is the existing.
The red line is the existing, the old...
It is a black dashed line that's not the intended line. What is that?
Yeah, that was... One of the dash lines is for the setback, and I believe the other one's for the... I'm not sure if it's clearing limits or what, but that's why this plan, you know, one was the... I'm not sure which dash line you're talking about. One's proposed setback, and there's some easements too. So what we did was, one of Charlie's recommendations after presenting this plan to him was saying, all right, strip all this away. You know, this was really more for to show you the difference between the red and the black line, so we kind of stripped that away. And as you can see on the new plans, was just the housing, you know, with the property lines.
I just want to make sure that I understand that the dashed black line has no impact on the lot line locations, on the proposed.
Correct.
It was not an initial or it was not a prior approved lot line?
No. Just the black...
But you don't know what it is?
Just the red line.
No, no, the... Yeah, but you don't know what the black... It's not a property line, right? This one.
So that would be... That would be the setback. And the fit in there, and this line hasn't changed.
No, this... I don't think so. No, that hasn't.
Yeah, that has.
This can't be a setback, because it bends away.
No, not from that one. Well, no, I think the original slot...
I'm not quite sure. That's the question I had, is that was the permitted line, and now you've got proposed. It's approaching to this person's property.
Yeah, this hasn't changed. This lot line is still the lot line.
That was as permitted.
That's their lot. This is the only parcel that we don't own. That current house, that property line hasn't changed.
Some of the new changes on this plan.
None of the setbacks has changed or anything like that.
So we... That is not for our consideration, that dashed black line?
Correct.
So did we add...
Just a note, if there's anyone here this evening for a solar project on Skirl Island Road, that is going to have to be rescheduled, and you will be notified. If you were notified as of... You will be re-notified of that.
So this is... This reflects the proposed plan, not what was there before?
Right.
So this building is small, and it's set at an angle within...
Wouldn't that change?
What they did was they...
Just an A and R plan.
Single. The total number of units in Phase One.
So, what you're suggesting is the change of lot lines and a different, different structures?
Yeah.
So, the board needs to make the determination if they consider these minor, and if they would approve the changes.
I recall the last time you were here, we knew these, the positioning of these structures were not going to be exact. There was a, I want to say we gave a 10% variance. Does that sound familiar?
In the original approval?
In the original approval.
You gave allowance for some variance?
Yeah.
Within some minimal, minimum standards?
So, there was still the requirements of the setbacks of side yard, and then in between each was obviously a big change, and so kept that at 20 feet. Some were actually less, like around 16 feet, some 18. So, all these will be 20, at least 20 feet, if not more now.
Right. But we could foresee that flexibility needed the last time you were here.
Yes.
So, I mean, Mr. Chairman, I would consider this within our original request, minor from what I can see. But I'm interested in seeing what the cosmetic changes are on the structures here.
What hits me is the single car story and a half garage looks out of place, is that doesn't seem to, it kind of looks like an afterthought to me in these renditions, is it?
You can see them, a good example of that would be at Seaberry, New Seaberry. There's, they have a lot of their in their cottages, have some of the single family garage. Would be probably the best indication for where it is. And again, it's a challenge with the two car garage because of width. So, you see on some of the tighter, New Seaberry would probably be my best example for that.
There's no living space that extends over the top of those, sorry?
Not usually. You know, there's an opportunity for a second, another bedroom at times if somebody wants it, but most of, you know, the target market is looking for that first floor living space. You know, second floor is an office, a garage, a office or, you know, something for the grandkids, but they're really trying to get as much living space as they can on that first floor. So, we didn't really design that extra family room over the garage you see at times. If somebody wants a family room, then you can finish the basement.
You know what, are we seeing anywhere the elevation?
They don't have a side, I don't have a side.
We should see that, no?
Yeah, and so what happens is, these are set back about, you know, when you actually go out there, they're set back about 35 feet from the road. They're actually set back a little deeper. When you kind of go out there right now, you can actually see some of the stakes in the ground. So, they're at least set back, and they're kind of, again, they're only 20 feet apart, 23 feet apart. So, even though you have two single families with the kind of garages, it's not like you're out on, out on island, so to speak. So, they're kind of, obviously, in a row, and what you see is some of the singles and duplexes mixed up, and so this way, it's not just all uniforms. When you kind of drive by, you'll have a streetscape there. So, when you have that garage, you'll have a couple of windows on that side to break up that elevation.
Could we see an elevation of this, this elevation?
Can you see it?
May we see it. Do you have it?
I do not have it, I do not have it with me. I can get you something.
You know, as far, as far as the lot changes, it's normal in the process of a project that this happens, and I don't think they're major. I, if we can comment on the buildings themselves, I don't know how far down the road you've gone in terms of the design, but it's unfortunate to be looking straight into the garages you approach the house. Is there anything you can do with that? The first, the main impact is the garage, not the front door.
Right. And, and, yes, there was, you know, what we tried to do is wood the peaks, and wood the, you know, the peaks and the step back and kind of what you see.
No.
In the different phases?
But that's quite typical, isn't it?
You know, it's unfortunately, not unfortunately, but you see it a lot, and you look at Brookside, for example, it's only garages. I mean, you don't see hardly anything, you know? In this type of condo development, you look, you go to Pine Hills, and sometimes all you see is literally the back, only garages and an entry inn, and they put the front where you can't even see it.
But we're talking about Bay Point.
Right. So, in terms of what's there, so I mean, that's, it's not like it's not out there.
Two wrongs don't make a right, or 10 wrongs don't make a right.
I don't disagree with that either.
Possible to reconsider, because...
So, that's what we tried to do by having that, is obviously you can see where the duplex plans, you know, when you kind of combine these, you put the two garages together, you put the peaks together to allow for that. But that's what we tried to do, kind of for the renderings and kind of show what it is. But we've wrestled with that too, is trying to minimize how much that is, not to just be garages, you know, and since you see a lot of them, just two car garages, and then all you see is a garage. So, kind of the compromise is a one car garage, but still have that porch in the front. And you can see all of them have decent sized porches so they can sit out there. So, kind of the compromise was to have that one car garage with the bigger porch so people can go sit, enjoy the views of the golf course, and enjoy, you know, the amenity of the open space, what we have, versus putting a two car garage, which would be to the right of the existing, and it would be all garage. Which was kind of the, you know, we have that design too. So, you know, we, we kind of went with the bigger front porches than the two car garages in front.
Yeah, but when you're sitting on that porch, the garage protrudes so far forward, it blocks your view.
Right. But your view is, your views to the side are obviously your neighbors, where we're trying to, the view of the golf course is in front of you most of the time.
So, the point being that...
I, I'm not, I...
If it's not too late to reconsider...
We've tried. This is unfortunately the compromise that we've, we agree with you, we don't want to see all garages. So, that's why we went from not having two garages and with a little porch in the design, we went with kind of one garage and then the larger front porch.
Does the market only want one garage?
The market wants at least one garage. You can't, so you'll see some that are fourplexes where they don't have a garage space, kind of the two ends and not the middle, and those are very challenging to sell, and the market doesn't want those. So, the bigger thing is that you see a lot up at the villages, for example, they've got one car garage, but they got one space in front. So, basically, if your wife parks behind you, you know what I mean, vice versa, then you have to move your car to get out of your garage space. Here, we always have two spaces in front of the garage, so this way, you're not parking in front of the garage, so you don't have to move. So, the biggest comments that I've heard is almost, oh, we're going to have two spots in front. Yes, all of them have two cars, spots in front, because the difficulty is if you have to move your car, you know, it becomes a tandem spot in, you know, for example, the villages right now.
You know how long we fought over that to get that done?
And thank you. So, it is a big item, and that's the comment that I hear more than anything. And, you know, we have full basements in these, so storages can be downstairs, we'll have bulkheads and for that. So, really, I haven't had, the garage, the two car garages are, obviously, if somebody can take a two car garage, don't get me wrong, they'd love a two car garage, but it's more important to have one car, one garage space at least, and then to have that two spots side by side, you know?
Moving the drives around, did it change the lighting configuration?
Terms of the site lighting?
Yeah, the approach lighting from the road.
The roadway didn't change at all. So, the roadway didn't change. There were, there's still only driveways to kind of get in. At the, let's call it the intersection where it kind of goes up, there's still a street light at that same location wherever there's an intersection, but...
But, but in units 19 through 28, we reversed many of those drives to the roadside. What is the intended lighting on the driveways?
So, it would be just on the garages themselves. So, where before you were looking at, I'm not sure what the exact intended light plan to be honest with you, because you were at the back of your house, your back deck, your back slider. So, I'm not quite sure if that was fully thought out, what that plan was, because when you tried to, tried to figure that out, it was created some difficulties, where this now becomes a little more conventional, where you can have the lights in the garage and a couple of spots in front. So, I think it'll look a little better streetscape wise, and that was one of the intentions of making that change.
In this rendering here, what is this? This is not your development here.
This was, yeah, it's one of the original, original renderings.
But you're not, you're not implementing it? It's not being built?
No.
And what is being proposed is not as successful. I think even marketing wise, but it's your call, obviously. I just think that the super, the superimposing of that garage, where that, on that floor plan defeats the purpose of the inviting entrance. It's not inviting, it's hidden behind the garage. I don't know to what degree you can reevaluate the footprint and the placement of the garage. I think it detracts from your entrance. As I say, the lot line question is relatively minor. I think that that's more important. It's like, you know, you make this wonderful effort, and then, if that is typical of what you're doing, very unfortunate. This, this was very, very appealing. That's what we were shown, and there's no promise of this happening. I'd go back to the drawing board.
But of the four interested parties right now, are they gravitating towards one design?
Um, some like the Liberty, which is a single story unit, the smaller one, but we also have the Schooner, the 1853 two-story model.
That's your porch, you're sitting there.
This wind jammer, it doesn't appear that the garage is right out front freestanding. It looks like it's blended with part of the main structure there.
And that'll unfortunately will be the least one out there because of the width, you know, with challenged. So, you know, you can go with the, with a much longer design, and then it changes the orientation of the house and really creates a longer feel to it. Just, again, not meaning to what other people do, but just to kind of give you a references, because I don't know what's out there in the market, trying to look at market, not just what we feel. You know, the Green Company in Plymouth at Pine Hills has a perfect example, where they have a garage inside and they have a much longer units, about 50, 55 deep. Feels a little bowling alley-like when you, when you make it such length to it. And we tried to, again, compromise, you know, from what the things are out there. Yes, the garage sticks out in front, we will not debate that whatsoever, but we, from the input already that we've had on the buyers and my architect, it's, we've had actually great feedback so far.
Can I ask you a question?
Of course. So, that's, so 20, 45, 50 feet, yeah. So, what happens is when it's a duplex, like up top, that's where you can put them together. So, when they're singles, then we put windows on the side. Right. So, the neighbors would be, so what happens is when it's a single, when it's a single...
Why don't you show us?
Okay, I just, I...
The words don't do it.
Yeah, so, 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 so what happens is when it's, when it's a single unit, then we put windows, two windows in the garage, a small window in the awning, excuse me, an awning window in the bathroom, a smaller window, and then typically, they don't want a bedroom, a window along the side, because that's where the headboard is going. So, so what typically happens is when you have them, a single, single as this, a single, you put two windows here, a window here, sometimes a window in the laundry, people sometimes don't want that. Usually, they always want a window in the, in the master bathroom. Typically, they don't want the window over here. Again, we don't care when you put them in, and you've had some designs where you have one or two, and have actually taken them out. So, so what happens when this is a duplex, and you put two of these together, that's why it's just shown this way as in the windows when they become a duplex design. And then when they become a single design, you know, usually two windows here, a window here, sometimes a window here. Typically, they don't have a window here.
I would respectfully say the words, words mean, words don't describe it, we need to see a draw, an elevation or a perspective, a 3D.
In the facade on the buildings is...
Is vinyl siding.
Vinyl?
With a board and batten look, clapboard vinyl siding. And again, it's a little bit of the, you know, working with buyers of what they want, and a little bit of flexibility in their design and what they want for windows.
Are the existing structures vinyl?
Is the what?
Existing structures up there vinyl now, on the side?
At the villages, they converted them over to vinyl, but a lot of the newer projects that are going on tend to go in vinyl for low maintenance. And, you know, a lot of them, you'll see the HOA fees are becoming a concern with the ones that are wood clapboard because of painting and replacing shingles and stuff. So, another big aspect was to go vinyl.
And this is the color selection of the vinyl?
This is a sampling. We got about six or seven, eight base colors, and then some of the accent colors. This way, there's enough of a variation all in the same family, but this way, everything doesn't look the same. Then kind of guiding people, if someone, you know, or if someone picks out one color, you can't have three in a row and things like that. So, so as we kind of go and develop, to make sure that it doesn't look like a cookie cutter development that you see, you see at other places. So...
But they're muted earth tones, right?
Muted earth tones, yes. There's no, nothing, nothing, yes.
You don't get the whole catalog, you just get...
You don't get the whole catalog, you do not. And even then, we still reserve some approval rights on that, so, you know, what you tried to, what you kind of see on the top renderings of the duplexes, kind of changing a couple of the, you know, of the beiges and the browns on the two different duplexes, but then with the board batten look to keep the same color, so this way, it's kind of all the same, you know, it's a duplex, it's all one building, but with the two different colors on the sides to give it some sort of personalization, so it's not just the same.
How is the duplex sold? Are you building on spec or...
Typically, we'd sell one and then, then shell and core the other side, not finish the inside, so it'd be kind of a quick delivery item. So, the second part of the duplex would be a spec.
And on that, rendering of that duplex, the left side, you lose the porch, just a single entryway?
Yeah.
Will we see that elevation?
We can show you that elevation. Uh, we can show you that elevation.
So are, are there two questions on the table, Mr. Chairman? Is it, is the, is the building design a factor here? It's just the, the question of a minor change is only on the increased square footage, right?
No, building design is also, they're also asking to change that.
Just looking at your overall rendition of your site plan on your brochure. And this is the golf course I'm talking about now, which may not be your...
No, go ahead, yeah.
You're showing the island hole as the eighth hole. I was under the impression that was only used certain months of the year, is that accurate?
No, it's used currently throughout the year. Yeah, it's open always.
So these changes didn't change the overall power of the golf course? I thought there was an agreement with the existing condo association that they would only use that island hole certain times of the year. And that they used another hole, which I don't see in existence.
Yeah, there is a practice hole, that is a practice hole that, you know, people do chipping and putting, but I've never seen that open and I've always seen the island green open all year round.
Well, you're looking, yeah, yeah, you're looking at this, but this piece back in here, these four houses here. Right. And that is now... These four are now one, two, three, four, five, six.
But these aren't to scale, are they?
They are not. I don't know.
Not entirely.
I can get you the actual plans.
One of the things that was caused, um, part of the process was... We didn't want to see similar types on... Two, three, four, single.
But you're, you're, you're close to fifty-five or sixty, I would agree with you.
No, I'm just trying to locate the second floor over the first floor using the stairs as the reference point?
No, the, the two different, the upstairs, is that a larger scale? These are more for graphic purposes only, not for...
It's a sales sheet.
It's a sales sheet.
No one's going to buy from this.
So it's a... So the problem too is they got to make sure to be able to see it on a one page, so that was more of just a...
But, but they're different buildings. The, the floor plans relate, don't relate to each other.
The second floor is at a bigger scale, so that's why we just put the dimensions.
No, I understand that, but is it part of this building?
Yes, that's the second floor. We just increased the size of the, just for graphical presentation, marketing, I guess.
Has the fire department reviewed this new layout?
Uh, they do when you pull a building permit. You know, you got to show the smokes and, and that. So typically when you go in, they don't usually have a comment on architectural looks.
Well, not, not on the architectural, but the repositioning of the drives. Is this going to be, uh, change, change their flow into the structures?
Well, the most part, it stays very similar. I mean, you know, some were orientated to the side and, and others, but still you kind of had similar curb cuts.
And is it possible back to nineteen to twenty-eight, where you have duplex nineteen through twenty-four and then twenty-five to twenty-eight is to a single? And can that be altered? I mean, you'd be working with the same square footage, just so we're not looking at four singles in a row, four duplexes in a row. Part of the original discussion may have went somewhere in the tone of, let's not have this cookie cutter process all the way through.
The original tone also had the idea that there was going to be a lot of flexibility to the developer to modify based as long as they had the setbacks and the numbers of units, the same number of units in there.
So originally there was more, on the original, the original plan had more there. So we ended up putting one duplex and there was no duplexes up to the right. So we ended up putting two single families, they had to break it up. But this actually shows an improvement to kind of your comment to what was originally approved. Originally it was five there.
Right, but ju- just the, the roadside appearance of single family, single family, and then you move into duplexes.
Right, and then on the other side, on the right-hand side, we kind of broke that up to go duplex, two single families, duplex, duplex, duplex. And, I mean, there's only four homes, it's not a, a major run. And so tried to kind of do that by, by doing that, you know. Compared to what previously was approved. Or shown.
The other, the, the other thought I would, I would throw out is the, the pitches of, of the roofs. They're rather flat. And in fact, we will be hopefully updating the zoning to require at least ten and twelve slopes, if not twelve and twelve. I think these are more like five and twelve, six and twelve. Again, in keeping with the, the vernacular of the area.
Also not showing any gutters on these.
Any what?
Any gutters.
Yeah, it's a little bit of a marketing plan more than a building plan.
Certainly the clipper, they're flat. The schooner.
Is there an elevation change between the roadside of the structure and the golf course side of the structure? Is there a two-foot elevation change? What typically is happening with the contour here, is it dropping?
No, it's, uh, on the right-hand side, it's pretty much flat. There's not a lot, if you drive up to the right, there's maybe a little dip right there. But for the most part, it's flat. On the left-hand side, if anything, it's a general slope up. It's actually, there's nothing going down, there's no walkouts, there's nothing like that. Right-hand side, it's pretty much flat. And the left-hand side, if anything, is more of a gentle increase than anything.
And the landscaping would be consistent with the previously approved?
Correct.
It's the board's pleasure.
Is there any public comment here?
No, this is... Right now you're determining if this is a minor modification not requiring public hearing. And if so, does it meet the board's approval?
Minor modification on both accounts, the, the square footage increase and the building design?
I, I don't have a, any objection to the, uh, change in lot lines.
To call it the lot line, uh, or...
I think that, that's normal in a project of this size. This will happen as they design the buildings.
Well, on both points, does the board have any issue with referring to this as a minor modification or...
Just to be consistent, consistent with what we said last time you were in front of us, do you believe that the increase in the actual footprint has grown greater than ten percent of what was originally approved?
Square footage wise?
Yeah, square footage, so... Meaning with the, with the original design that you came in with, if it was fifteen hundred square foot structure, did we stay within that ten percent increase on the, on the footprint of the structure?
I would expect it not to have changed that much because the, I, I can't tell you that specifically, you know. But the idea wasn't, it wasn't like fourteen hundred square foot designs and we went up to eighteen hundred square feet. The size of the units, I mean, the duplexes were previously three bedrooms, which would put you at, you can't have a sixteen hundred square foot, three bed. You know, that pushes you into seventeen, eighteen hundred square feet just to have three beds. So I know the previous designs had three beds, so that tells me it was around seventeen, eighteen hundred square feet, which is similar to what they are. So I would be surprised, I can't say exactly, but the intent wasn't to increase the square footage of the units. It was more for the design of the, the master.
So, so my opinion would be in that case there, then that would be consistent with a minor change of what we originally agreed with on the footprint. So to me, there's three issues, right? There's this, the lot change, which I think we're in agreement with, that's reasonable. The footprint, plus or minus ten percent, we're within that part of our original agreement. It's just now the architectural design, that, that's really the, the third compartment. And I, I think I, I'm just neutral on it because I can't see it from my house, so... I think you have excellent comments. But in, in the same regard, this, this is more about a market study and what can be sold.
We are being shown an incomplete picture. The, again, I go back to the appealing overall aerial perspective that we saw in the past. A copy of it is here, wherever it can, where I put it.
I think it's last page.
Great hearing, okay? And what I would hope we could see, not only the, not only the elevations of a specific unit with its floor plan, but there's no site plan with it, you don't know how it sits on the site. Where is the neighbor? And I, we want to support the project and we have been supporting it, but when you're bringing us incomplete information, it's difficult to... The, the, the issue of the lot lines is, it's a minor issue as far as I'm concerned. But the visual aspect of the, that what you're going to, you're never going to see the lot lines, but you'll be seeing the buildings. And what we would expect, yes, it's an effort at an elevation, the one, the favored one obviously, and there's no site plan. How, how is this thing sitting on the lot with the, with the road street?
Right, and, and...
And that makes the picture complete.
No, I, I, I get it. What, what it does is it also, you know, these are the ones that could be on any house lot, depending on if they sell and, and there, and, and we can show it in relation, some are singles next to a duplex, but we did not provide all four elevations like we would for a building permit.
Show us the, any one of those, show it to us in its entirety. It's difficult to evaluate it when you're seeing only half of it or a quarter of it, that's all I'm saying.
I understand.
So ideally, we should be looking at a site plan of one or two of these units next to each other, how they relate to each other, how they might relate to an existing neighbor. And what is the landscaping, what does it do? So that would give, that I would consider a complete picture of, of what we're being asked to, to comment on.
The plans they submitted do show the location of the buildings by type. The plans that they submitted do show where the location of the buildings are in relationship, to each other on the footprint.
But not in elevation and how they would look?
Not to this degree of detail, that, that, to be consistent with this package, anyway, that's my view.
I think that's an excellent point. And, and again, if it was a chosen structure, then that, then we could base the decision on that. But it's not, there's seven different choices there.
Doesn't matter, any choice you show should be complete.
All right, I, I, I mean, we're, I mean, even though, these houses are going to be modified a little bit and depending on the buyer wants and I...
Are all these designs meant to be standalone or duplex?
Pretty much. That's the intent, that's why you see that long side without the windows. So the only one that doesn't really apply to that is the windjammer with the garage on its side. But the other four allow for that. And that's kind of what you see on the top is a, is a schooner and a clipper together as one, and then down below as a standalone. You know, a lot of times they don't, most developments don't have as much variation or they just have duplexes all over that are the same, if you go to some as reaching others. So we tried to have some varying designs to allow some varying, even to put duplexes together that are different, to kind of create that different of a streetscape.
Well, on your plan, just for example, one through six all seem to be the same footprint.
Yeah.
Does that match up to anything there?
To the one that's rendered up top.
Up top, which is...
Which is a, which is a...
Two of the schooners, is it?
Schooner and the clipper. So it's these two which forms this, so we put that in as the, as the model to do our design. But obviously it could change depending on what people buy and what people want and what it is. It was shown more for graphical presentations to maintain that we're going to at least have twenty feet apart and kind of how it's positioned. But, you know, every one's going to be a little different and as we go on, it's going to change depending on what, you know, somebody buys a hypothetically, a couple of the bigger ones together, more for width-wise, an actual square footage, that next house might actually have to become a little skinnier. So these are kind of a little more fluid and can be fluid in terms of, of feet, you know. You know.
So one through six are duplexes, seven and eight are single family?
Correct, and nine and ten is a duplex.
Nine and ten are the duplex.
Again, you know, you build two, then that third one, that one in the middle now, because you've got to maintain setbacks, might actually change and modify a little bit to, to fit the site. And depending on the orientations of the golf course, you might modify it a little bit from there. So these will modify a little bit depending on the site location and where it is and, and the buyer's choices. But the duplexes for graphical purposes are all the same one for this exercise. But they will be a little different.
Yeah, well, I see fourteen and fifteen as a different footprint. Is there any more information needed?
Anything? Anything?
Do we see anymore, will we see?
What do you want, a rendition from the back, front?
Like to see what that wall looks like.
Can you create some other angles for these so we can get?
Yeah, 2D, I assume, doesn't need to be a 2D elevation you're looking for?
Ideally, a 3D. A 2D, a flat, although that's pretty flat.
Yeah, so I mean, you're not seeing much from a 3D, it's a pretty flat plane, so I don't, you know, I don't know if you need a render to show that flat plane.
The 2D would help, I mean, would not be as cursed, yeah.
I mean, we're not going to, obviously, marketing purposes, we're not going to show it, because.
I don't, the discussion is simply to get to a point where you have attractive structures. And I suspect that that elevation is pretty deadly. 30 feet, 35 feet, 60 feet, blank wall.
Yeah, I don't think it's that high, but I.
You know, so.
Yeah, everyone's a little different and there, and then you add windows as you go on, but we weren't ready to, you know, design each house.
What would help it is breaking the plane, just punching holes in it isn't going to do it.
Right, but I don't, the plan wasn't to offset those as much when it's only 20 feet apart of your neighbor. You're not going to see that view, you're just not going to see that much. When you have two of them together, your view of it is very small. So, you know, that's not where we're going to, you know, spend the money and kind of to do it. That's, you know, when they're duplexes, you can see it up top, you don't have that condition. For the, for the single families, their garages are always side by side in terms of that, so the garages are always on that side, so your viewpoints aren't going to be that great, anyway.
Thank you, thank you.
Right or wrong, I mean, I'm not, and again, it's not like I'm even disagreeing, it's something we've wrestled with, like you can't believe, okay? Because, and we came up with, this was the compromise that we came up with, because there are a lot worse designs out there that is just garages. So, yeah, the compromise is, yes, the garage is sticking out a little bit in front, not debating that. But it's better than showing two garages in front and we wanted the porch, so that's kind of what we're going with and so what our marketing says and kind of we've already had good feedback. But I don't disagree with you, I'm not, be clear, it's something that we've wrestled with a lot, a lot, and this was what we came up with after looking many, many, many things that are in this area and that are currently being built and being sold and pluses and minuses to each of those, right or wrong, and then this is what, with our architect, is what we ended up compromising, coming up to. And it's not like these aren't, they're in the, in this current market and there are much worse designs, what I consider much worse in the visual, but two garages just in front would know, as example of Brookside or for the others. So, I think this is a compromise to what we're looking for, yes, you have in the one garage, you've got two garage spots, you've got some longer porches, you've got some setbacks in the front, and it's kind of what we, what we think our market wants and versus more garage space in front. But it's nothing that was just put together a little bit, so.
You know, to me, the garages look out of proportion in and of themselves.
When it's a single.
And if you made it a foot or too wider, you could break up that solid wall and make it look better from the street, I think, but it wouldn't lend itself to using the same plan to slap up against another one because you wouldn't have a flat wall.
Right, and when they go up against some, another one, then you don't have that. When they're singles, you know, and when they're singles, they're, you know, only 22, 21 feet apart, 22 feet apart. So, even though it's longer, you don't, you know, when you're driving from the street, you know, that's 35 feet back and it's tough to kind of see through, I mean, could we step them a little bit? Yeah, of course, but there's not, you know, and again, depending on which one you put on site, kind of changes.
If you were to put an architectural feature above that garage door, like a shed roof with brackets on the side, would that change the appearance? I think, to me, it would add some dimension to the straight plane of a garage.
On the side, on the?
Just above the garage door.
Well, I mean, they look better on there than they do here, I mean.
Same one, just printed smaller, so.
Just a different picture.
Same one, but. It is a challenge in this design, where it's.
Even on this, what I'm saying is if this had a shed roof and you were looking at some shingled surfaces with right or left decorative bracket of sorts, you wouldn't.
So, what we did there was we did, we did more of the board, we did with the arch, we did more of the board batten look, familiar with that, to kind of break it up. You kind of see that in some of the newer designs, more of the board batten look. A lot of structures are just straight clapboard with none, if you look at out there, what's Red Brook and some of the others. And so, we tried to do that by having the arch and by doing the board batten up top and then the clapboard on the side to create that, a little bit of that look that you're going for. And we tried that.
Schooner, for example, what number on these plans might it be?
So, it would be. It'd be number 20. I think 26, but I'm not quite sure, 26. Yeah, a clipper. Nope, 26 would be.
Flip of 28.
A clipper. Looking for a schooner, which is an A4. It wouldn't be on, it's not, it's not, it's an A4 in terms of that, so there is not one.
Not here, what about clipper? Clipper here?
So, clipper is, is number 26. Number 25 is a Liberty. So, 26 is a clipper, 25 is a Liberty. 27, which is our biggest footprint.
Wait, what's 26, I'm sorry. 26 is a.
26 is a clipper.
27?
27 is a Brigadier. You know, if you kind of look at that, even though, you know, the 27 looks smaller square footage wise, but because it has an upstairs, it, total square footage is greater, but the actual footprint. You know, 25, which is a Liberty, which is just a single story unit, it's a greater square footage in terms of building footprint, but not in terms of total square footage.
What is 28?
28 is a Liberty.
I thought 25 was a Liberty, oh, it's flipped?
Yeah, mirrored, yep. You know, trying to keep that long wall, you know, and garages together.
What are the setbacks there, just quickly, what are the setbacks?
18, it's on that.
The rear?
So, it's 20, it's from the, from the back, it is 18. From the rear, it's 10, excuse me, side is 18 and front is 12.
Rear 10, side 18, front 12?
Yes.
Thank you.
And most of these, you can see, because you're doing that two garage spots in front, really pushes them back, you know, 35 to 40 to 60 feet. So, it's not like you're right on top and you've got, you know, you're walking, it's, they're actually set back a decent ways from the roadway, which kind of gives you a little more of a front yard.
I honestly think that garage looks more pronounced because of the white door. I think, I would be curious if you changed the color of that door, run more into the facade color, that it wouldn't, it wouldn't be so obvious just standing out there.
Do you have these to schedule?
I guess some of what we're trying to wrap our heads around is the proof plan showed specific buildings in location with the landscaping and everything, and now we're back to mix and match.
I think there was always.
It was always mix and match.
It was always, it was just, if you mix it, then here's the landscaping that goes with that match. So, there was always variability in the plan.
That's correct.
But the, you know, the mix and match comment is, you know, so you have landscaping to that plan, so the landscaping still would meet the same intent that was there depending on what it is.
And my last question, these footprints are those footprints, right? Thanks.
Anything more?
George, could I make a couple of comments on the plan itself and then also on the modification document? On the special permit and site plan documents, Chris, would you ask Tom to remove the reference to definitive plan approval? It's on the, it's actually on both sheets. All we're doing is site plan approval here. It's the one that shows just the buildings and the setbacks.
And it, and I'm sorry, Charlie, and it says definitive plan someplace?
Yeah, right, right over here in the margin, on the edge of it. It's got the approval block for definitive plan, we're not doing a definitive plan, so just ask him to take that off.
Thought we caught all of that.
And it's on both sheets. And then the reference is again to existing 50-foot right-of-way to be removed and accommodate new 40-foot layout, that's already been done. So, if you can remove that, there's two notes to that on sheet two or five. I don't see anything on the next one. And again, on the, on the cover sheet for that set, just remove the definitive plan references. And if you could change it to simply minor modification approval with a place for the planning board to sign so that there's reference to the fact that they've done that. That would be helpful. And then with respect to the, to the written document, there's no explanation in any of the language that I see that talks about why you're asking for this special permit modification. It references the July 9th plan, but on the July 9th plan, you can't see the difference between the old plan and the new. So, there's no way that you can relate what you're looking at. So, perhaps just as a suggestion, there's a second paragraph under item two jurisdiction, where in that paragraph, it talks about approval without a public hearing and so forth. Could you add language that describes what it is that you're seeking? So, if anybody picks up this document and then looks at the plan, they'll understand what it was that the board was doing by this. And I don't see, I don't see Mike's name added to the list. You've only got George, Mike Baptiste, Emmanuel and Mark as being potential signatories. Couldn't Mike sit on this also? So, his, his name ought to be attached to that, your name.
He's on yet, Charlie?
The one I, I had modified, the version that you submitted and included his name in the other one.
Oh, okay, because I'm looking at the one that.
Yeah, I didn't have his name, so. Sorry, forgot you.
Right, and then what I did under the decision, under section four, decision and findings, noted that the modifications include reasonable changes in the lot lines and footprint of the houses, all in keeping with the original approval, to try to explain what was being, what was being done.
Okay, so, so in your version, what I just asked Chris to do is in there? Okay, I think I'd still ask that, that that being some description of what it is he's asking for be included. What you've basically said is that there are reasonable changes in the lot lines and the footprint of houses that are in keeping with the original approval, I think.
More of an explanation.
Yeah, well, it, by adding the languages to what he's really requesting, it gives a connection between the document and the plan itself, because there's no indication on the plan as to what the changes really are. That's all I had, George.
So, you want to correct that, you want to? Like on the wind jammer, it does break up the side wall, but you say that's too big to be used as part of a duplex.
Right, widthwise, that becomes challenging. So, there's a couple of locations can be done if somebody chooses it, you know, in some of the single families. You know, and then when you have a duplex, it doesn't really matter, you don't have the long wall because they're together.
Yeah, it's broken up by the garage, but I don't see, yeah, there's a couple of windows there.
You know, when you combine these two, then it's, you know, then you don't have that, these walls are not usually in that same formation. Usually, it's that size where you have the family room, a living room, so it's just when they're standalone, but when they stand alone, they're 20 feet apart and the garages are together. So, they're single families, but they kind of have a little bit of the duplex feel because even though they're 20 feet apart, their driveways, it's not like the driveways are mirrored, so it's 80 feet apart. The driveways would be typically 20 feet apart and sometimes you see them as a common entrance and then split off to the driveways. Again, which I think would be a bigger problem if you were, you know, if they weren't 20 feet apart, then that I think the garage would stick out a lot more because you'd have a lot more spacing. But this being a tighter environment and what it is, is that the garages will kind of not line up, but kind of be similar and not just be out in a field with one long, one long garage. They'll have side by side and they'll be 20 feet apart, so it's not like a, you know, typical house, which is 200 feet from your neighbor or something, so, so the look will be similar, but.
Is it common to put bedroom against bedroom with a duplex?
Kind of, you know, I mean, you can do a double wall, but, you know, it's versus a living room or something like that. And what happens is on that side of the bedroom, most people don't want windows because that's where your headboard is going, so that allows where a good place. Obviously, if you do a living room, you want windows everywhere that you can have. So, a lot of the designs typically has that bedroom as a common wall.
Anything more? Do you want to see the sidewall, I mean, it's, I think they're just putting windows in it, basically.
I don't know what, how far our authority takes us to ask for it, how much our authority allows us to ask for it. I think the developer, it's in developer's interest to improve that facade.
Just like the two parking spaces was in their interest.
Your point is a well-taken point, also bedroom next to bedroom, that's a very good point. And the more windows in bedrooms, I mean, there's no reason to not have more windows in the, you know, with due respect, the reason you gave is not valid.
Again, I, I'm not even debating it, I, it's offered, it's free of charge, they can do it. My first two people said no, I'm not, I'm offering it. So, it's not like I can't debate with, if no one says no, I don't want it, I don't, along that window.
That's fine. I just think that if we could see more, if we are presented with more visual aids, it's easier to respond.
What is, what is our deciding point, though, Emmanuel?
Pardon?
What, what would we encourage? More windows, less windows?
That's not the question. The question is what does it look like, and then you decide what, what it needs, or the architect decides. Right now, the, the message that this is saying to us is one big blank wall.
Well, I, I didn't hear that, though.
Huh?
I didn't hear one big blank wall, it'd depend on the configuration.
No, I'm saying, whoa.
If it wasn't teamed up as a duplex, then there would be three to four windows in that wall.
You can't evaluate it without seeing it. That's all I'm saying.
Well, it's a point, you know, three windows on a, what, 60-foot wall is, isn't gonna be that impressive, I mean.
No, but it's, it's also a possibility, even if it wasn't a duplex, the homeowner would say, I don't want any windows on that wall, period. They want as dense as possible, cause my neighbor's only 20 feet away from me.
Well, that's, that's internal for them, that's internal for the developer to persuade his client, what's good for the, for the building, but again, I don't know how far to take this, I'm just saying that we cannot, I cannot evaluate that wall. And it's an important wall, I think, but in terms of its mass, its scale, so be it.
Well, if it would expedite things, could you send something either to the planning office showing some renditions of that side, or even to, if Emmanuel would like to get them directly?
Could you even give you my architect? Let my architect talk to you.
So George, we're gonna give him a decision on, that is the second part of what he's requesting. The first part, why don't let's move on that. I think everybody's in agreement that the expansion of lots is all in favor, that's a minor change, and move this process on, because all we're doing now is beating a dead horse.
Is that a motion?
Yeah. Sounded like one, right? We'll come back and address the other comments.
So you're looking to, you move to approve the change in lot lines as a minor modification?
Yeah.
Second? Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And regarding the change in design, much your pleasure.
His, his architect's gonna forward some information to be reviewed, and we can make a decision on that in the next meeting, two weeks.
Second? Discussion?
Just curious, any of your prospects? The, they're speculating these designs, these potential buyers?
Yes.
So the 23rd, then? Few more drawings, right?
Well, we got some. Have you, have you begun any construction of, no, cause you gotta get the surety in place.
It's next on the agenda. That's the next item.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I'm reading. Yeah, so you're looking for side and rear elevations, basically? And perhaps how they interact together a little more than, they look, looking at your plan, they don't, at least conceptually, they don't all line up. Some of them are a little offset, which is, which is good, it breaks things up a bit. So, motion on the floor to come back with other elevations and renditions of the structures? And it's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Next item is a discussion on the triparti agreement? That's where we ended up? You have anything on that?
No.
Oh, he's got them here.
More people?
Emmanuel, when did you hope to?
That's all right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Has this been reviewed by town council?
This is what Ken provided me. So, this is what Ken forwarded to me, forwarded to my bank, they had no issues with it, so we wanted to make sure that the planning board was okay with the triparti agreement. Obviously, we'd fill it in and come back to you and have it executed at the next meeting, but we wanted to make sure before we executed it that it was acceptable. It's, I'm not sure where it came from, Ken. And then attached is what we previously came forward, the amount, so we had the amount and the breakdown as previously, as I previously came back for approved, so then it would be this form for the triparti agreement.
I'm sorry. I zoned out. Town council look at this, or?
Town council hasn't looked at the completed one, which is where we would need to have the spaces filled in before final approval by town council.
So it says here, right?
Gotta start bigger than over than that. Okay, okay.
Ken, can you give us an executive summary of this?
Oh, what this, what this does is it sets up a three-part agreement between the town, the bank, and the developer, and what, that allows the town to control the dispersal of funds through this, through this agreement. This is one of the types of surety that's permitted by state law.
So, the town is going to, the developer's gonna ask for release of funds, someone on the town's behalf is gonna authorize that?
Yes, there'll be a, there'll be a request made to the planning board at a regularly scheduled meeting, where, and where you'll be taking a, reducing, potentially reducing the amount of surety that's there, based on the improvements that have been made to the subdivision, and the remaining funds that are within that account. Does, does this number represent contingency?
So the, so the, the actual spreadsheet does not, then we put 50% above that for contingency. So the actual amount is 463, based on, on that spreadsheet, and then we added 50% to get the 695, 695,000.
And you're, you're including phase two in this?
Yeah, that's that, no, it, it, my, the site estimate, it was just, all it meant was, phase one was at Station 13, that road, and then the other, what he called phase two was that front roadway, Baypoint Drive.
Oh, okay, so it's not phase two of the project, it's phase two of Baypoint Drive? Which?
Basically, the entrance of Baypoint Drive up to, around the clubhouse, Station 13.
Is there an approved design filed for?
Yes.
Yes, section?
Oh, yeah. That was your definitive plan you approved at the previous session.
Right, if CETA doesn't go forward or something, then we're gonna do that as per designed and planned. If CETA come, you know, if we come back with CETA and with a different plan, that might modify that roadway, so that's the only reason we kinda called it a different phase, cause we'll be coming back for that. That's the only reason it's broken out in two different phases. But it's all part of phase one, that has to be done. If CETA doesn't go forward, it's designed, the bond and the capacity's there, it's just broken out for clarity.
I think one of the things we've done in the past, and I don't remember if it was a triparti agreement, was that we wrote it up so the lender would be responsible for road completion, should the developer default or not have it completed at a date certain, and took the town out of the mix, just.
The only one I remember was that one for Jonathan Estates, I'd have to go back and look at that one, see what it said. But, that's a good point, George. And the other thing would be to, to put a date certain in here also. That the construction as defined by the, the cost estimate in this document would be done by a certain, certain, certain date. They can always ask for an extension if they're getting close, but to not have a date, you're gonna end up with the same sort of a situation that you're dealing with.
Yeah, define timely.
Right. George, you want me to check that? I think in the, in the file I have for Jonathan Estates, or you may have it, Ken, in your file.
Right. If Jonathan Estates has one like that, I can look it up.
Yeah, yeah, they had that. That's that small subdivision off of Hathaway, Ken.
I know it. Well, I think we just ran into a, I was looking at here, is it requires the planning board to notify the lender of a default.
That's why the date is important, because if it doesn't get done by a certain date, then they are on default, unless they request an extension of time.
This one isn't as bad as the, the last time we ran into this, I think it was the assisted living, and if you miss the deadline, the bond just expired.
That was, that was a performance bond under insurance, but it's the same thing. I mean, you do need an expiration date, and there needs to be follow-up to be sure that it doesn't expire, so you end up with no security.
Well, I think if we, if we put a date certain in there for completion, that takes the burden of us having to watch the calendar and make sure we notify them within us.
Can we put a clause in there to have them notify us? Why should we be the bookkeepers, the babysitters? You know, so many days before completion or expiration, we notified of the work, the status of the work.
I'm sure they'll be coming in for reductions along the way.
Yeah, but I don't, I don't think you wanna.
Not reductions, per se, but payments.
Yeah, as, as they complete the work, they would probably ask for a certain amount of money to be released, which you'd have to take a vote on and then get a document to the bank so that they could do that. But I think it's wise to have the time limit put in here, and if you wanna include Mike's suggestion that they be responsible for contacting the board, say, 30 days prior to the expiration, so that somebody knows, nothing wrong with that.
Well, this won't expire, per se.
The only thing.
I think, I think we could head off a lot of headaches if we make the lender responsible for completion.
The only paragraph I don't know how to interpret would be the second one on the second page, where it talks about the first mortgage and a note, and the lender forecloses on the mortgage and so forth. That needs somebody with a law degree to explain what that paragraph means to me.
That's in case of default of the developer.
Yeah, I, I assume it means that the money is still held in trust by the bank.
That the bank has to provide those funds.
But I'd like to be comfortable with that.
Right, so if I default, it's still, it's not like the money goes away. So the money's still there, even if I default, then, you know, it's not like, you know, typically if obviously I default, then my loan's in foreclosure and then there's no more money, where this is, I believe, saying that even if I do default, that money is still, which is the whole idea of it. But I am not a lawyer either.
Bottom of page one, there is a blank before the words certificate of approval, but what does the blank refer to?
In this case, it would be the definitive subdivision. Would that refer to the date of the certificate of approval, or? Yeah, we could add a date to. I see what you mean on the other paragraph, Joe. What does not, what was notwithstanding me? If you read it going forward, I read it going back. It says something, if you read it going forward, I read it going back.
Ken, did you say the town council has reviewed this?
No, I did not. I said that it'd have to be filled out before town council reviewed it.
And will you fill it out, or the developer, who fills out the form?
Well, I'd, I'd fill it out, just with the plans and the references and the dollars, and the banks would sign it. And then I'd, you know, my plan is to come back next meeting with it executed. Right? And then, oh, we just want to make sure the forms, I don't want the bank to sign the wrong form, or if it's not acceptable, so I'm trying to get, you know, if Ken sent me the form, so I'm just, you know, we're just making sure the planning board's okay with the form, if they want any additions, we'll put any additions, and then get the bank to sign it, come back to either you or town council, or whatever Ken tells me, and...
Town council.
Town council.
Do you think your bank's going to be in agreement with taking responsibility, finish off the construction, default?
I do not know that.
So I think that's the first question at hand, is, to me, that makes the most sense. Rather than task town officials here with managing the process, the bank should be responsible for that. If they opt not to take on that responsibility, then our position would be, do we want the responsibility, or is it traditional bond?
The same process that the state law allows, which is, the town takes responsibility for securing the funds and completing the, completing the work on the subdivision.
Right.
Who prepared this?
I don't recall.
So, it's, I understand that it's a tripartite agreement. So, at, at this discussion, we are giving him some suggestions for edits, that they will then complete with their lender, and then have our council review it? Why, I'm sorry, I'm...
The, the process for executing the contracts is that the town council reviews the, the executed contract before a signature is put on by the town.
But what if he wants to suggest changes? If town council has, frankly, I, I, you know, I always felt lawyers never went to grammar school, so it's very hard to read this stuff and understand it. So I, I would like for...
How about I find out where it actually came from? If it came from town council, then, then we're resolved. If not, then I'll ask town council to review it.
Well, I wouldn't say we're resolved, I think we could use an explanation of this paragraph. If he wrote it, then he'll probably just say that this survives any foreclosure.
Right, and I, I don't know how much, I mean, if this is Commonwealth law, I don't know how much flexibility we have to add or change this document.
Comment, the, the state law doesn't specify the wording of the tripartite agreement.
Pretty, pretty general. I'll get it out.
Well, my point for bringing up, you know, putting the lender in the driver's seat as far as completing it, is they more than likely can get it done cheaper and with less of a headache than the town trying to do work on a unaccepted roadway with...
Yeah, but they're, they're a bank, they're not a construction company. I'd be, I, I would be quite surprised if a bank says, we'll take on the responsibility.
They've done it, they've, they've accepted that, but I don't remember if they accepted it under a tripartite, tripartite agreement. It may have been a cash bond or, I think it was a tripartite. Find something, Joe?
Well, this is just the state statute, it just says that, uh, it's an agreement recorded after the first mortgage between the applicant, the lender, and the town, with sufficient funds, in the opinion of the planning board, otherwise do the applicant to secure the construction of the ways. The agreement also provides for a scheduled disbursements, which this does, which will be made by the applicant upon completion of various stages of work, and shall further provide that in the event the work is not completed within the timeframe set by the applicant, any funds remaining undisplaced shall be available for completion. That's all it says. So, that's why I say it's important, one of the things is that timeframe, to be sure that Chris agrees to it as well, but it's got to be some timeframe, and he can also ask for an extension, the way that you would if you were in a, if you had a covenant, you can ask for an extension of the covenant, or if you had a, a security deposit, whether it's insurance or cash, you can ask for an extension of that. But there's always a time-related debt, so you don't get into the same issue of having a road uncompleted for 10 years. This is always tied to inflation and if the town should have to complete it, now you're talking about prevailing wages, which gets a little more costly when the town has to do it.
Do, do you have a timeline? Is it, bring it up, Chris?
Yeah, we could definitely set a time, obviously, we're not looking, you know, would not be, we'd look for five years. I mean, we're not looking for 15, obviously, nothing like that, and not even looking for 10, I don't think that's reasonable, but five is more than reasonable, if it's reasonable to Charlie, I don't know what you were thinking.
Right now, the covenant, I believe, says two, and that's, that's a, part of a universal timeframe. Again, we talked about that as being something that could be extended if you're not to the point where you finish the roadway construction within the two years, but it's obvious that you're working at it, those kinds of things can be, in my view, negotiated with the board, and you could always request for an extension.
Well, they, they could be in a position of already needing an extension, because how long ago, how long ago is that?
Well, yeah, it, yeah, it might be close, it might be wise to look at that and just to see, but...
I believe it was August that the decision was...
Well, the, the Phase Two was August, but Cohoon Road, Baypoint Drive in Phase One was approved.
It was August.
Was it? Seems like it was further back than that. Well, that was a year ago.
It's almost a year ago.
In a long time, George.
Time flies when you have fun. That's when the mediation approval, that one's...
Correct.
No, well, that's the definitive plan, that's in your certificate of approval. It's a standard feature that's been in your certificates from day one. So, it'd be a good idea to review that, Chris, make sure you know what the two-year date is from when that said it had to be completed, and request that extension.
So, Mr. Chairman, is, so we're suggesting that council look at this language? Try to spin this document in holding the bank accountable?
Well, I think two things need to happen. You need to fill in the blanks, is that what I'm hearing, or who's filling in these blanks?
Right.
Or both?
Yeah, I can, fill in the blanks isn't a hot pot, I just want to make sure, before we execute this, that...
And then some changes in the languages, in the language, if agreed. And then a council review?
Yes.
Do, do we actually have to vote on this? Or it's just a courtesy viewing?
You eventually have to vote on it if you're going to
Vote to accept it.
Accept it.
Right, so I, again, you're the lawyer.
No, not.
I mean, I, I couldn't, I couldn't, I, I just have to stay neutral on this. I'm not, unless, unless town council is telling us that this meets the spirit of law.
Whatever we do here, it still has to get approval by the selectman. Am I correct?
I don't think that's a tripartite.
Because this is a cash deal.
Okay.
I'll, I'll check on that with town council too, just to confirm.
Yeah, okay. Let's move ahead on that, then, George. You're gonna fill in the blanks, one emotion?
Well, I don't think we, I don't think there's a motion necessary, we just need to fill in these blanks, get a couple of questions answered, and then we can act on this, right?
Right.
Everybody's approved it.
So I, so I guess, you know, what I'm trying to, you know, again, it's a circular loop a little bit, you know, obviously, filling in the blanks is just, you know, when my data, my approvals and things like that, so that isn't the hot pot, it's any language, I didn't want to change any of this language, because this is what Ken gave me, so I didn't want to stop modifying that and going between lawyers, so I didn't modify any of it, so, with the hopes of getting it approved, so, just because, you know, I don't want the bank to sign it, then you come back and say...
Are you seeking modifications to this language?
No, I'm just trying to get it approved, you tell me what you want, and at least I'm just trying to move it along, and I don't want to come back, and then you say, all right, I want a time, and I want the contractor to do it. I'd rather you tell me what it needs to get approved, let me try to come back in two weeks with what I have approved, but just to come back with, you know, no, give me some direction at least, or how can I get this approved?
But I think for us, the window is two weeks, but the ball's in the council's hands.
That can be done fairly quickly.
I'm sorry?
That can be done fairly quickly.
Right, so...
If we get the document in within the next two weeks, we can get town council to review it.
Well, who's going to?
I mean, is this my lawyer and Richard Bowen to, to look it over and to come to agreement?
I, I think there's, there's one other question here that came up, which is the responsibility, putting the onus, the obligation on the lender to be responsible for completion of the improvements to the subdivisions, should there be default?
Right, so I'll, I'll, I'll work on that in the next two weeks, and to see if it's even, even if it's applicable, or how challenging that would be. And then I guess, what would the time limit would be?
I guess we'd have to plug in a date for completion.
Which would be based on a certificate of approval.
Which says everything has to be done in two years?
Two years.
You can always come back, like Charlie said.
Is that based on the approval or on?
It's based on our, our standard covenant language.
Okay.
So all bonds and all subdivisions have to be completed in two years, or extensions have to be granted every...
Yeah, you gotta keep, gotta keep the approval active. Unless we get another permit extension act coming down the road, I don't see that happening.
Mr. Chairman, I've, I've got some proposed language to that effect. I can read it for you if you want, and then give it to Ken so we could incorporate it. All work covered by the security amount described on the approved plans and is itemized herein shall be completed no later than 24 months from the commencement of site construction. The developer may request an extension for good cause at a time, to a time approved by the planning board.
Sounds good.
I think without, two years from the start of site construction, what's, what triggers that? Application for building permit, application for road opening permit?
No, the, the site construction is the, is the road construction, this security is strictly for the definitive plan anyway. It's not for the special permit.
If he doesn't start road construction for 12 more months, he's got two years from that point.
The way I wrote it, yes. If that's, there are, you can put it 24 months from the date of signature, if you want.
Or from the date of pulling the permit.
Pulling the first building permit? You could, you could write it that way too, if you want.
Looks better for consistency in the office.
Two years of standard...
Date of approval?
Date of approval is the standard.
Would it be easier to track on that? If that's easier to track, the date of approval.
I don't know if anything is easy to track.
Well, the date of approval of the plan?
Of the certificate of approval. Or of the covenant?
Yeah, by, by approving this, you're actually doing away with the covenant and substituting this document for it, so that might be a way of doing it.
How did you word it?
But how, have you been put out to bid that road construction yet? I mean...
Say that again, I'm sorry?
Will, will you start that road construction this season?
Yes, as soon as I can get this signed.
Okay. Just making sure that there's not the six-month...
So, based on this document, two years from the acceptance of this, or the execution of the security agreement?
That would work.
Say so, that would make sense.
Because that would change it from the covenant to this.
Yeah.
From the execution of the... Or acceptance, yeah.
All right, we get a direction?
I think so.
I'll be back.
Two weeks?
Thank you.
What's your... Uh, street acceptance recommendation for Candle Paper Lane, has he supplied the proper paperwork to the board of selection?
Uh, he's getting the, a butters notice, this is the layout, plan. Or the official... And this is the original subdivision.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I may be excused?
Certainly.
Thank you. I have a three-hour drive, but I'll speak with you.
Thank you for coming in tonight.
Not a problem.
So, they've not officially petitioned the board of selectmen for this as of yet?
Uh, no, they have not.
Yep, I haven't done an inspection either, George, so I don't know what the conditions
So, well, the first step is the board of selectmen will ask us for a report, which means to send you out and...
I typically go with Dave Menard and the two of us do the inspection of it. So, I'd have to get the plans out that were approved, along with the certificate of approval, and make sure there's no outstanding conditions that haven't been met. Then I'll write the letter, along with David, to you.
And the proponent needs a... provide a fee for that, I believe?
George, the only thing I see about the plan itself is that typically, we have shown as dashed lines that portion of the layout that is owned by the abutters. So, that whoever does an appraisal for this actually can figure out what to charge. Typically, it's like a dollar amount that they ascribe. But they want to know how much square footage we're talking about. So, typically, what you do would be to draw a line down the center of the road, and then project the lot lines out at right angles to that, and compute a square footage, and assign it to each abutter's name. And that gets shown on the plan, too.
Oh, as far as the taking?
Right.
No, I was thinking in terms of the review fee that...
There's nothing in the town policy about review fees. So, we'd have to request that the board of selectmen ask for that.
I mean, I thought that's what was in the policy, if I'm wrong.
I don't see anything about fees in the policy.
I know that policy changed several times, so...
Is it that Main Street and Pierceville? Main Street and Pierceville, well...
And this is not a street acceptance plan, right?
Yeah, essentially, it is.
That's what you get for a street acceptance plan. What Charlie's suggesting is adding the information in the layout as to ownership.
And as I look at it, too, there are two or three other things that would have to be clarified. If you look on the plan, on the left-hand side, you go into Candle Paper Lane there, and to the left, it says drainage easement. Then there are two additional pieces that are off the cul-de-sac that call for drainage easement. I assume if the town takes the layout, they'd also want to take the drainage easement, but without some definition.
So, I say, that's why I didn't think it was a street acceptance plan.
Well, it is in terms of the format, but they haven't shown it everything. So, unless there were conditions of approval that said that the developer or the owners shall maintain the drainage system, then you'd want to accompany the layout of the street along with the drainage facilities, but without knowing what the plan approval said. I'll put that in the report once I've reviewed the file.
And I don't know if they're proposing taking or an easement, or...
Generally, whatever the town council suggests, I think it's been in the form of easements.
So, he's just collecting the petition now?
Apparently, he has collected signatures, I found in the file.
And then submit?
And he has to submit to the board of selectmen that information, and then receive the...
And then the board of selectmen will direct us to...
File a report.
Ask us for a report. What, are we at 45 pages? Ah, oh, no, that's not it. Thought you gave me some. Under other business, there's more discussion on zoning articles for fall town meeting. And you mentioned adding dimensional standards?
Yes, there was the building inspector... inspector of inspectional services, director of inspectional services, Dave Requina, had asked for some additional changes that were not included in the spring town meeting that we were going to bring forward again, and see if it was of interest to the planning board and town meeting to approve additional changes in the dimension... some of the dimensional standards. And this, in particular, is to protect those lots that have been undersized by zoning changes that have taken place in the meantime, in the subsequent years since they were originally approved. So, it sets a minimum standard for dimensions. So, if it's... if you're supportive, I'll bring forward those changes, and we can go to have a discussion on them. Or, if you're interested, take them right to a public hearing.
Well, I think we'd... I'd like to familiarize myself with what he's suggesting first.
Would they be available to come in to clarify any questions we have?
Yes, he would.
I think that would be a great help.
All right, we'll set it up as a workshop again.
But if you can get us the paperwork ahead of time, so we can...
See what the changes are.
May not need to get.
The next one was the Tremont Nail Factory redevelopment district. Typically, in a lot of communities, the zone changes are done for industrial building redevelopment because it's so difficult to accommodate that within the structures, because they're typically unique structures, just as the Tremont Nail Factory is. And it's... The site limitations get some leeway under the district regulations to allow those to occur, and still preserve the buildings in the historic context in which those buildings were set. So, it provides a little bit... provides a... an easier way of getting development in and maintain the historic nature of the structures at the same time.
I think we also need to make sure it complies with the perimeters of community preservation, where the funds were used to purchase the property and make...
That's what I'm saying, is maintain...
Make repairs. So, we need to make that everything meld together properly.
Right. Yeah, the purchase...
I don't think it's too hard to comply. I think it's just a matter of... we need to address it.
Yeah, and the money was spent with historic preservation for CPA funds, and in the acquisition of the property, and in any improvements that are made, they have to follow the Interior Secretary of... the Secretary of Interior of federal standards, federal guidelines for rehabilitation of buildings. So, those would be a part of the requirement for continuing the improvements to the property and the uses that come in there.
And if it was under historic preservation, I think it just applies to the exterior of the building. I don't think it limits use.
There's not a whole lot on the interior of the buildings, as it is.
I mean, it wouldn't have to stay that way. Just like the old town offices, they didn't protect the interior of the buildings, so...
Yeah, I think in some cases, you want to preserve some of the interior structure.
Yeah.
Because it's a unique framing that was used in the buildings.
What I mean by that is I don't think it would affect the use, the CPC funds. It was done under historic preservation, so you wouldn't have to have any of the other categories kick in, like the uses wouldn't have to be for recreation, or affordable housing, or any of those. I mean, they could be, but I don't think they'd have to be.
That's right.
It wouldn't hinder that type of development.
Ken, how would flood zone regulations and construction of... and upgrades of existing buildings might impact this? I know typically, if you're doing more than 50% of the value of the appraised cost of the building, not the assessed value, it's the appraised value of the structure itself. If you exceed 50%, you have to upgrade the whole thing to match flood zone regs. But this must be pretty unique. I don't know how you'd ever do that.
Unfortunately, not really. I mean, there's some protection against the wetlands regulations in allowing the use to continue and to be improved, the structures to be improved. But the code that requires that 50% floodproof improvement is based on federal and building code, state building code. So, what you have to do, then, is by increments, make changes in the property over time. This was discussed in the vision plan that was created last year.
Okay. So, you've looked into it and evaluated the potential improvements and so forth with that in mind?
Correct.
That's all I'm saying. Yeah, okay.
Just shingling the roof, double the value.
Good.
Do you... is there a language that has to be created to create the redevelopment district, or...
Yes, there is. And it could be done as an overlay district or a standalone district. Remapping of the Tremont Nail Factory, which is under Wareham Village One zoning right now.
One or two?
One.
That one stopped at CBS. And do we extend that when we create it, too?
It was extended up to the...
Is that redevelopment district something you would continue all the way through Wareham Village? Is that what you're suggesting, or...
I think there's a distinction between what happens at the historic factory and what happens along Main Street, because I think there's a little bit more potential for change in... on Main Street than there is in the district, the industrial district.
I guess I'm asking, would it be advantageous to create a larger redevelopment district?
Actually, because the Slum and Bite study that was just completed found that there was enough issues...
There's enough to deal with on that one side.
That... no, that across the whole Wareham Village One district, that we could be starting to think about a redevelopment zone that applies to the whole downtown, and all the way up to the Tremont Nail Factory. And with that, then, we could have additional incentives and powers that can help advance So, are you amenable to bringing that forward? Do you want to do it as a workshop, or do you want to...
Oh, I'd like to see... I'd like to learn more about it. So, if you... a workshop would probably be beneficial.
On the transfer of development rights revisions, did you have any additional questions? Even ask who what transfer development rights is?
You were talking about putting in a banking mechanism.
A land bank.
Yeah. Did we find any of the old language on that? Because we did talk about that. Or do you have language from... they said it worked in Plymouth, is it?
Yeah, the Plymouth language is the language that I have.
Yeah. Maybe we could look at it and see if it's something doable. I don't know. Can anybody contribute to that bank, or... We're kind of limited as to we set up senders and receivers. Would that open that up to...
And it overlapped a lot in the sending and receiving districts as well. So, there are a couple of other things in the... as to which districts are appropriate, and should we add commercial districts into the mix? Because it really was just a residential density. The way it's structured right now is really just for residential density that...
Well, I don't think... I... we were trying to create or encourage mixed use, but I think somewhere along the line, we cut back on the ability to use mixed use. There's a lot of the zoning districts that's not allowed. And I thought we were going the other way with that, to give people more... make it more available. You remember that? Like, I think one of the... one of the donor pieces was like the Ocean Spray complex, where you could have commercial or retail use on the first floor, and residential component either on another side or upstairs.
Congrats for what it was.
Yeah. Once it died, it doesn't come in.
So, the original was allowed for mixed use. And I think there was some mention of mixed use in the district, in the zoning bylaw, but it doesn't specify the transfer other than residential density. The way I read it.
Well, I think all our sending parcels were all residential areas, so that's all you had.
That's right.
That's all you had to trade. You couldn't... there was no conversion factor. Although, I think somebody had one, was it a woman?
I'm not sure.
I mean, that's kind of unique, though, because they get a lot of old mills on parts of Plymouth.
Yeah.
You know, we got basically four mill spaces, Tremont Nail and Ocean Spray property.
Sounds like we could do a month of workshops.
Emmanuel left early, but... early, not... he left late, but the one I'd been discussing with him, and the last time, we had some discussion about... the one I'd been discussing with him and the last time we had some discussion about a subcommittee was on the West Wareham zoning, on the district boundaries and the design guidelines. And Manuel reported to me today that he hadn't followed through yet on looking at the design guidelines.
He was looking at the zoning map prior to this meeting, and I kind of tried to illustrate what was on the ground, like you've got a big block of purple there for industrial and tried to show that, okay, this is already out of the mix because it's William Crossing, and this piece is out of the mix because it's Walmart. So I think if we could create a map to show what's in place, I think the board could better understand what we're dealing with up there.
So show an existing land use map, and we have that with the corridor study that was done by SERP Ed.
I saw that one on 2016, that one?
Yes.
Now, was that what's on the ground, because there was some things labeled industrial that I didn't think were industrial or institutional. So is that actual use that they illustrated?
That was actual use, yeah.
Because it still showed William Crossing and Walmart as industrial.
Those aren't very industrial.
So maybe we could look at that a little closer.
Yeah, I can check in with SERP Ed to get the land use map.
Listen, I'm referring to the wrong map, but they must still all have all the information in there.
Right.
What I do remember of those design guidelines that were commercial planned, I think those called for multi-story buildings close to the road. That's what was encouraging.
Yeah, more of a village center style development.
And then packing and stuff behind it.
And a pedestrian environment. Which may not work on Route 28. But it might work in the redevelopment of the Wareham Crossing. Where you have enough area and you have retail and service, a little bit of service, office space that could be packaged in a different way.
I like the Main Street section, like...
Yeah. Exactly. Looking at that and saying, you know, if you were to, if they were wanting to reinvest and try to make it a little more exciting again and regenerate activity, would they put second-story service uses, office space, residential, maybe? Could be a variety of those uses that starts to make it feel more like a village center rather than a shopping center.
You know, when people are packed, the packing lots fill up at certain times. So Emmanuel is volunteered to do the design guidelines?
He was hoping for some help, but he's volunteered to spend the time on that, try to think through those and how they might work within the West Wareham.
I remember the commercial plan that was proposed was the same area of the industrial that I would suggest that we changed, industrial land that comes up to Cranberry Highway.
Right.
And I think to put multi-story buildings up close to the highway, I think that would have a negative effect on aesthetics coming along there.
It'd be hard to create a village center feel to it.
I think it was more of an office type setting. She was, you know, Anthony was the driving force behind that. I think she had kind of more of a office slash commercial type feel with, you know, brick and mortar, multi-story offices and no residential component per se, just the canyon, you know?
Yeah. Which is a more substantial traffic generator as well. When you're adding more commercial space there.
Which that would fit into industrial, but... Read through it again. Been a long time.
Yeah.
There hasn't been any proposals in that commercial plan, I don't think.
Can I make a suggestion? Talking about commercials and so forth.
Do you want to move up to the microphone, please?
You're talking about all the commercial development and so forth. The amount of environmental destruction that's gone on in West Wareham with the mall, if you put it that way, Walmart and other things that are going up right now. I don't think we can afford to lose any more of our natural resources up there. One of the most disgusting things I've seen is that solar farm they put in there. Trees are much more important than solar farms. Trees are much more important than blacktop or houses or anything else. And I think that if there is going to be any kind of a discussion of plans up there, we ought to take that into very considerate, serious consideration. And not just look at it as being something we can chop down the trees and put in more buildings. So please, take it seriously.
No, we didn't have any input on the solar farm, and I agree with you that I agree with you that it makes no sense to cut down trees to put in solar fields.
Oh, I put in a lot of other things here.
I just want to, a couple of quick things. My name is Jim Benese. I live in Cranberry Highway. We have a lot of great equipment here, and when I see people come in, professionals, I think they should utilize their laptops and the digital cameras, project things on the screen, and that goes for planning board articles too and things. Zoning maps. The zoning map you can get through the municipal mapper. Kind of poor, there's no streets on it. You have to be very familiar with the drawing with the overlays, the color overlays, and familiar with the town to know where is what and where the breaks are. There probably should be street names in them, probably should be tied in with Mass GIS or the muni mapper so that you can overlay an ortho digital photograph on it. So now you can see everything you've just been talking about. The industrial parts, Cranberry Commons, Walmart, you could actually see those structures on the zoning. The zoning would be in an overlay or vice versa. And you can make concrete decisions about it without just kind of materializing it or visualizing it in your head. That's something that can be done. I don't know if the town GIS has those capabilities, I'm sure.
It does.
That should be a great improvement. It would help you an awful lot, too, in your planning processes. And like I said, we have this, you know, three-gun projector here. That's probably a couple thousand bucks. I don't know if, nobody ever uses it. And I think I would require people in presentation to do it in a digital format. So you're not all, you know, squinting at little pictures and this and that, pop. And if someone says, well, what about this here? And they go back to this, and okay, that's sheet 13. Boom, sheet 13 comes up. What about a side view on an elevation? Oh, yeah, we did that. Bang, it's right there. Just a few suggestions. And I think there was a good point made, too, about keeping a character in the area when it is being developed from, you know, say, south of, yeah, south on 28, beyond Walmart and stuff now as you've, as it moves through development, if it continues that way. Do you want to go with the box still, or do you want to try to keep the rural character and have the buildings that are coming in kind of reflect that in the architecture as it's being developed? I think that would help a lot with, in the development and being possibly more acceptable. Drive-through wasn't a big, well, for the people who came to the meeting, more people were against the drive-throughs over there than far, there were some compromises. It went through, and I guess that's about it. You guys have a great night. Thank you.
Can I talk to you?
Sure.
I don't know if you remember, I'm Kathy Papalardo, but back when we had the West Wareham Strategic Planning Committee, which I know was a while ago. And we had the consultants, Howard, what were they called? Howard Stein, Hudson. And they interviewed residents and businesses all around in West Wareham to see what did they want for the future. And just a couple of notes that I pulled together from all of my notes from back then. In interviewing people who lived in West Wareham, the number one thing they all said, and even Ken Farrar said, "We did not want West Wareham to look like East Wareham." That Route 28 was going to divide the town, and then we would turn into Route 6 in North Dartmouth with just commercial from one end of town to the other end of town. People wanted to maintain the rural character of West Wareham. They wanted their historic England village preserved. They wanted the zoning to conform to what was there. Don't reinvent the wheel. We want to stay rural West Wareham. The mall came in, we couldn't stop it. The traffic in West Wareham is a disaster. Trying to get out of Fearing Hill Road where I live, trying to get out of my driveway, and it's only getting worse. The railroad bridge, getting under the railroad bridge is a nightmare with people who are flying through there. Anybody who does West Wareham knows that. I would say please take into account the people who live there, who I think have suffered enough with the commercial development that has gone in. You know, Walmart moved, we couldn't stop that. We asked for certain things, Walmart told us it was too expensive. That was Walmart at their meetings telling us this. So we're stuck with Walmart. We're stuck with the big mall. Toby Road is a disaster when it rains. I'm sure you've been down there for the puddles. I think it's enough already, and now more solar farms. Now they're putting, they want to go down Blackmore Pond Road and put in another solar farm, which is going to take out a whole bunch more trees. Truly, Joni Mitchell's They Pay Paradise is happening. Please take that into consideration.
Next time your governor or your senator or something talks about going green, tell them where to stick it, because they go in the opposite way.
I get that.
Anyway, Nancy McHale. Just taking a look at the planning department's master plan draft, vision plan draft. It says, quote unquote, "To encourage economic vitality in existing business areas while limiting commercial sprawl." Certainly seems to me that rezoning, that part of Cranberry Highway in West Wareham is counterintuitive if indeed you're going to try to limit commercial sprawl. And that the land use focus should be on redevelopment and improvements in the Wareham Village and Onset Village, encourage development in existing commercial centers, and promote the development of the Route 195 and 25 business areas. To use the PPPs, DIFs and TIFs to achieve development in the existing areas, we don't need more blighted areas. We certainly have enough of those. We don't need to rezone to create a whole new set. Please, don't put it forward. Give it a chance to work with the vision. You guys have some great ideas for redeveloping downtown, revitalizing the East Wareham stretch of Cranberry Highway. I know that the traffic down there has been a nightmare, but reworking that roadway is going to make a big difference. It's going to make it much more appealing. Like I said, I don't see that creating more commercial sprawl is really what we need in this town, and certainly the vision plan doesn't say that's what we need. So that's my two cents. The other question is, what are we going to do with more commercial areas? Can the, are those areas sewed? Is this going to affect the disposal areas? How are we going to deal with all of that? Not to mention the traffic and the fact that the residents in West Wareham generally just don't want it.
First of all, the proposal that we discussed was not creating any new commercial areas. It was just changing the zoning map to reflect what's in place, like Wareham Crossing and Walmart and the beaten property.
Until there's a map to be seen as to what that is?
That's our next step is to identify, because if you looked at it, if you looked at what we had last meeting, it looked like we were creating all this new retail space, and we weren't. That wasn't the proposal. The proposal was to fix the map to reflect what's on the ground, and then to adjust some of the industrial land on the east side of 28 to be more, to encourage what some might consider replacing a blighted situation there.
When do you expect that?
It wasn't expanding anything that's not already there.
I will tell you, that's not what the word on the street has.
Well...
And until we see a map, we don't know. So thank you for listening to our concerns. I appreciate that. Any idea when those maps will be available?
We're in the process of fine tuning them. One map came back and it doesn't really illustrate. That was what, that was the 2016?
2006.
No, Emmanuel had a map of 2016 that was color-coded for...
Oh, yeah.
But that had, at first glance, it had errors in it.
Yes, it does.
So if we can...
We have a GIS person who comes in part-time to help out.
Yeah, regards to GIS, the town's investment in GIS has been like this over the years, so sometimes it's, everything's there, and then stuff gets dated, then it gets caught up, so. So, sometimes it's, everything's there and then stuff gets dated, then it gets caught up, so.
All right, I'll keep checking in with Kenneth to see how that comes along.
All right, Nancy. I look forward to it.
I'm sure you will.
One thing I just want to say very briefly, when the strategic planning thing was done, we attended every meeting. And one of the things that was brought up, not by people who want to be very clear, was that, oh gee, Great Hill, ooh, that would be great, commercial property. We could get that rezoned because they have sewage trouble, we could just boot all those people out. And I actually stood up and said, you know, those are people's homes. Whether you look like that or not, those are people's homes. And that wasn't even in consideration. If we can get that zoned, all of that land, they're already having sewage trouble, so they like to unload it and then, you know, just boot the trailers off and go. So that kind of thing sticks it, sticks.
But it's, it's not that easy to just boot them off and go and, and.
But it was brought up.
I know, and there was some reactionary zoning done because of that, that it actually harmful to West Wareham.
I don't know, it's really hard. You feel like you're beating head against a stone wall.
Are you folks aware of the hearing before the ZBA for used car lot up across on the courthouse? I think it's coming up Wednesday.
Ferrioli's property.
Wednesday we're hoping to talk in a lot of work for his Westport.
Yeah, it's, it's where Dottie Ferrioli lived.
What are they going to do, tear down her house?
Hmm, I don't think that's the plan, but to put the cars out front.
Oh lordy. Just awful. I swear, if you have a patch of 10 feet of trees, somebody would want to do something like that. Your job is to protect us, please.
You know, you, there's a balance between individual property owners' rights and, you know.
Believe me, they don't care about us.
It's a constant battle to.
$1,000 to the Walmart at all the meetings, the lawyers, you know, the law books and all. Pretty much said in no uncertain terms, we're going to do it.
Oh, I know.
That, you don't like it. That's very unfair.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night. West Wareham citizens are coming back.
So do you want to have that land use map? And with that idea that we're, we're trying to rezone for existing, what's on the ground?
Well, that and my proposal was to, you know, it, to me, if you bring it up, if, if town meeting doesn't want to do it, then we don't do it. But I think we should bring it forward anyway. I think it's worth discussion if it, if it improves that stretch a lot better. I think the internet is going to take care of the retail development, to be honest with you.
The only way to, to reflect what Mac and Kathy and the other folks we're in here talking about tonight is to rezone that section from the Rochester line right down through England Village, down to Toby Road, or at least as far as, say, Patterson Brook Road, something like that is, is residential.
I thought we protected, um, England Village.
Well, that, that might, well, I'm not sure if it's totally protected. But there's still a strip of commercial that goes all the way up to the town line.
Yeah, but from Cava Road up, but I think between, between Shala Furnace and Cava Road, I think is, is residential.
But, you know, that last piece is as much a part of West Wareham as the rest of it is. Just because I happen to live there.
Well, that's mostly residential there too, so.
Yeah, it is. What has gone in recently, in recent years, has not been objectionable. It's been a rehab of things that have been there for years and years. The Carriage Shop, that's a new, relatively new building, but the building that's beside it, that's now the, the little, um, Speedy Mart, that was originally Checkman's Garage, if you remember that, Mike.
Oh yeah.
Then you got the courthouse, which is a decent looking building. You can get the, the bank across the street now, which is decent. But, um, you know, we need to do something along the line of what Emmanuel was talking about in order to preserve some of the look in that area. It's not all, it's not all the same, but it, it has a character of its own. Which, you throw up something that's modern or something that is, another Morton Building is not necessarily in the best interest of the town.
The design guidelines for commercial plan could be cleaned up because I think, I don't think they encourage, I think they encourage more brick and mortar, formal office buildings.
Say it in such a way that, that basically you can use anything you want. I mean, and there are certain restrictions you can't say. You can't, you can't eliminate certain types of materials, but there are ways of, of, I think, improving the looks of it so that.
Yeah, I think the design guidelines are going to be key.
Yeah, yeah.
What I was looking at is if you went from Toe Road to Great Hill and put that in either the general commercial, it may encourage some of those older sites to get redeveloped or even occupied. They're not, you know, you had the guy that bought the Nissan building and started and then he walked away and.
Well, he bought.
Wareham Pharmacy's been empty for.
Together bought Nissan's, he started doing work in there, but he got, he put a cease, they put a cease and desist on him. But he bought all three buildings in package deal. He don't give a shit, he's just sitting on it now. Bob's Tire.
Not Bob's, Pete's Tire Lines.
Yeah.
You're suggesting do not spite or?
No, no.
I think you may be directed somewhere else.
He, uh, you know, he had all intentions in opening it up, but, but he had opposition from other people around, you know, beside him. Angus, she was squeezing him. Because she owns, the trees, that's where the parking lot is, you know, on, on the right-hand side of the building. Property lines right there. On the other side is not much bigger. I mean, that's a post that's, you know, worked for Nissan's, but.
I, and I think that's one of the things, you, you, you rezone, it doesn't necessarily mean that something's going to come.
We have to, what we have to do is look at what the market is looking to, to attract.
It's just like Wareham Pharmacy, you know, I'm sure sooner or later, somebody will, somebody will be in there.
But there's an example there where if you could work with the property owners and do a parallel roadway from Toe Road to Great Hill, that would eliminate, that would like, get the people out of Great Hill, bring them down to a signalized intersection. It would allow for inter-site where, uh, crossings without going on the highway. You could come up with a nice plan there to get everybody to work together and I think cost of the, the dollar always has a great deal to do with it, but how well they work together.
I've found in these, these cases, there's also ego involved in the property owners that think they maybe have a better idea than their neighbor.
I'd say you can plan all you want, but you still have to deal with individual property rights.
That's right. And the town doesn't own all the land, so it can't say exactly what gets done on all that property. And you can't necessarily step out and radically change the zoning and not get hit with a takings issue if you change the property value and the property rights that those people enjoy right now.
Well, you, you talk about the stretch from there to the town line. The neighborhood commercial district, that, that, not a bad place to develop that, where you might have somebody that works out of their house or.
Well, you could do that now. I mean, if it's a professional office.
Something a little more than a residential area, like, like a trade, you know, some.
Well, you could even have something like what's already there, the insurance office or, or there is a, Dunn's Insurance is in that building right there, side of the.
Margaret Rishiera has an office in the.
Yeah, she's got an upstairs office there. So a professional building, something like that, or, or insurance business where the traffic is low, uh, where the buildings can be built to look.
Engineering company, huh?
Yeah. But where, where the, the traffic impacts are low, uh, where buildings can be built to look like they're a part of the environment and a part of the residential neighborhood. Those kinds of things, I, I think are doable. You know, I'm not saying that we're going to go back to Tremont General Store or Pizzoli's Market, but, you know, it's that type of thing which could work in there.
Yeah, fully, you could have those neighborhood markets, but just not feasible anymore.
No, not with the, well, they went out for a reason.
Yep.
Good memories though.
Frank Pizzoli was a nice guy.
You could, you could buy anything from, uh, 22 Bullets to a pair of shoes to a slice of bologna in Tremont, in Tasciere's store. Plumbing supplies, anything. Gasoline out front.
The real general store.
Yeah, it certainly was.
When you, when you go up north, even the ones up there are kind of struggling. Further north you go, the further away from the big boxes you get.
I think you're right though, the internet is going to have a, a big say in that.
Amazons killing everything like that. Amazon's putting the small mortar and brick companies out of business.
It's not even the small ones. I mean, I was listening to the business show the other day on the radio, and they're beginning to compete with Lowe's and, and Home Depot with some of the products that they sell.
Yeah, we go head to head in a few years. It's on their own basis, so.
Yeah, Amazon just, just released a, a new franchise.
Mm-hmm.
$30,000, he can buy into a local Amazon delivery service.
Yep.
We, we participate in the construction of two of those distribution centers. The whole, the whole master plan is a distribution center every 60 miles. Same-day delivery. That, that's their master plan.
Well, Walmart's plan was to store every 30 miles, you know. Amazon does.
Than that, didn't they? They probably got to start with 20 miles. From this one to Taunton, from this one to Plymouth, and this one to, Yanis would probably be the furthest one away.
And you got one on the Cape, isn't it? Right?
Yeah, there's one in Falmouth.
That's it?
Yeah, it's a little one.
Yeah, little one.
Yeah. Well, George, if that's it, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I would. Second discussion, a whole favor? Meeting adjourned in 10:02.